Good evening, everyone. Tonight, as we have for the duration of the pandemic, we're having our monthly October Borough Council meeting using the Zoom platform. We're glad that you've joined us virtually for this meeting. Participants attending tonight's virtual meeting via live stream may provide public comment during the public participation and public hearing portions of the meeting agenda. Your comment will be received and read aloud by a staff member so that all of council can hear the question. To comment, participants must log in as a guest and provide their name and address via the live stream chat in order to participate. Please note that there is a 10-second delay when using live stream chat, so feel free to enter your questions in prior to the start of public participation and expected delay between us reading them and them being submitted. With that, thank you again for joining us, and we will now begin our October Borough Council meeting. With that, I believe we're starting with the moment of silence and pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the Republic of America, which it stands. One nation.
Under God. Indivisible. With liberty.
Duty. Justice for all. Thank you, everyone. And with that, Mr. Crack, roll call.
Ms. Berkeley. Miss, I see you. Ms. Dugan.
Yeah.
Mr. Kirchner.
Here.
I'm sorry, Mr. Dalton, but we know he's not there. Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Soto. Mr. Weiss. Mr. Ewald.
Here.
Mayor Rischler. Manager, Assistant Chief, there he is, and solicitor, all here, you have a court, sir.
Thank you. Just for the public's knowledge that Mr. Soto is unable to attend tonight, and Mr. Dalton will be a few minutes late, he's running late from a work issue. With that, the first item on tonight's agenda is to consider last month's meeting minutes from the September 8th regular Borough Council meeting. What is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented today in a slightly corrected version.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Kirchner, second by Mr. Moore. Any questions, corrections, or amendments to the motion at hand? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six zero. Okay. Tonight, I don't believe we have any presentations.
Oh, sir.
Okay. So with that, we will move into the first round of public participation. And as we just announced prior to the start of the meeting, if anybody has any public participation, it is available via phoenixville.org through the live stream chat. Wait a moment to see if anything comes through the chat system.
Bear with me. Mr. President, I have someone trying to type to us.
Very good.
At this time, Mr. Ewald, he hasn't typed anything other than hello, so I'm not sure.
Okay, well, we will circle back towards the end of the agenda. We do have a second round of public participation. Should any members of the viewing public not have been able to submit their comment at this time, feel free to submit it, and we will put it into the queue for the second round of public participation. With that, we will close this round of public participation, move into communication and council participation. I believe Mr. Kirchner, yes.
President, if I may, I just, I just want to acknowledge the passing of David M. Freeze Jr. Who, a person, he's one of the first people I met when I first came to Phoenixville as a young reporter 41 years ago, and he was always, he was always so gentlemanly and gracious, and he's, he's been a true pillar of this community. I, I, I remember first time I ran for council. He, he was a notary. He had a standing policy that he would notarize the petitions of any candidate, even, and even though he was of the opposite party, it was well-known that all the Democrats went to him to, to get their applications notarized, and, and he was always, he was always so gracious. So he loved this community, and he devoted his life to it like, like no one I've ever known. He, of course, ran the insurance agency there on Gay Street that his son Rob and now grandson Tyler have run, and I had the, the honor of serving with him for a couple of years on the Phoenixville Community Health Foundation, and I saw just how, just how, just how broad a scope he, he had in understanding this community and the compassion he had for, for its people. And, and one thing I'll always remember, you talk about someone who walked the walk, literally, I remember for years, he would take his morning walks around the borough and picking up trash along the way. So he, I, I always think the measure of a person is to leave something in better shape than when you found it, and I can say for Dave, David Freeze Jr., that he's certainly left Phoenixville in a better state than he found it in, and I, you know, and, and I'm sure many of us in the borough join in and expressing our sympathy to his family, to his, to his son Dave, and to, to his son Rob, and to his whole family. He's, he, he was truly a pillar of this community, and, and if we can get another one like him, Phoenixville will be even more better for it, but, but because of him, Phoenixville, he has a lot to do with Phoenixville being what it is today. Thank you, Mr. President.
Absolutely, Rich. Thank you for those kind words. Any other council participation or communications, just the minutes Mr. Dalton has joined us? Any other council communication? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the mayor's report.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you to all of you who are joining us virtually in this very special format. I just want to echo Mr. Kirchner's sentiments and send our deepest condolences to the Freeze family. Of course, it's absolutely incredible, but David Freeze had also was a co-founder of our Phoenixville Historical Society, and so that's something very special and a very special legacy. I know that he leaves to all of us and very big shoes to fill for all of us who continue to help serve the Phoenixville community. So thank you very much, Mr. Kirchner. There was a beautiful memories that you shared of Mr. Freeze. So a couple of things that we have that I just wanted to update the council on, as well as our dear friends and our neighbors. Just the first thing, of course, the last couple of months, we started by really providing an update around the COVID-19 situation. Of course, the, right now, in the last 30 days, the Phoenixville community has continued to fare relatively well. Although we are, and I just want to say this with a, with a big asterix on the side of it, we are starting to see in communities around us an increase in the number of cases, and so I would like to just once again encourage every single person to please take the steps that you have been taking, continue with that mask wearing, and even when you are on Bridge Street and it feels like you're outside, anytime that you're in a, an area with a consolidated number of people, even if you are outside, please just for your safety and those of your neighbors, please make sure that you're wearing a mask, you're doing that social distancing, you're keeping up with that hand washing, et cetera. The Phoenixville community has fared relatively well. In the last 30 days, we have seen 20 new cases, which isn't necessarily outside of our tolerance that we've been monitoring. East Pikeville has seen 11, and Schuylkill Township has seen 26. As I did say, there are some communities within Chester County that are starting to see larger numbers once again, and so we just need to continue to be extremely diligent and ensure that our community is able to stay safe, stay healthy, and most of all, stay open. So thank you for doing that. Another thing I just wanted to announce, and thank you to Mr. Crack, who's been working on this with me, but we do have a ballot box at the Phoenixville Library. This is a Chester County Voter Services ballot box. It is an official ballot box. It is manned every time it is open, and it is at the library, and it will be there basically from now until Election Day for you to drop off those ballots of yours. It is collected every single night, and it is stored in a secure location, so it is a secure place. If you did not want to use the self-addressed stomped envelope, then you could put that in the ballot box at the library. If you do have any questions, there are a lot of questions specifically around the mail-in ballots, again, and it's kind of a funny little campaign, but please don't send in a naked ballot. Make sure that you are putting it in both envelopes that have been provided, and you're following all those instructions to the T, especially even the type of pen that you're using to fill in that ballot, just because we want to make sure every vote gets counted, so your voice is heard here in our community and in our county. So if you do have any questions specifically about the elections, you can go to the Chester County Elections website, and that is chesco.org backslash elections. Again, chesco.org backslash elections, and that has all of the information that you need from Chester County Voter Services specifically around requesting mail-in ballots, which you still can do, and even registering to vote, which you can still do until the 19th. So if you have any questions, or if you need to find a drop-off location, make sure that you're doing there, and just follow all the instructions to the T. We want to make sure that your vote gets properly counted. A big shout out to all of our organizations. We have incredible nonprofits throughout the Phoenixville community, but it's been a very challenging time, as you can imagine, having to have taken everything virtually and going remote, and even though I don't get to attend many of the events that I do love to, to do this time of year, a big shout to our Community Coalition, Orion, the Chamber of Commerce, we also had a Bite for a Fight, who've all taken their events virtual and have found ways to creatively engage with their audiences and their supporters. So thank you to all those people and to all of the wonderful organizations we have in our community, and to all of you who volunteer or support those organizations. I actually just came home from, and it's now sitting in my oven, the Phoenixville Senior Center spaghetti dinner, which was a drive-through dinner. So thank you for supporting all of those great organizations and the work that they do here in our Phoenixville community. Last but not least, I know it's been a hot-button topic here in Phoenixville, as it has around the country, but we do have some updates around Halloween. As a borough, generally at this meeting, I would be providing you times that we would suggest you'd go trick-or-treating. However, this year, we are suggesting to, that we reframe from trick-or-treating this year, so we are not suggesting traditional trick-or-treating, meaning people go from door to door and collect candy. We do have a variety of other events, so that we are encouraging people to take part in. Again, this is just really for the safety, for your safety, your family's safety, and your neighbor's safety and health. Again, you know your family, you know your neighborhood. Best of all, I'm not going to try to prescribe to each and every person what you should do, but as, as an overall blanket statement, we are suggesting that people not participate in traditional trick-or-treating, but that doesn't mean we can't have a lot of fun, and so the Phoenixville Borough has three contests that you can participate in. We have a costume contest, a decorating contest, and a coloring contest. All are virtual. You just submit your photos. They'll be judged by an incredible panelist of judges, and you will get some bewitching and spooky prizes. So you can do that through phoenixville.org backslash Halloween. And then we also have a large number of organizations who have gotten together, and on Halloween night, October 31st, we will be having a drive-through, what we're calling a spookily distant Halloween display, meaning you stay in your car and you drive through what would have been a parade, and everyone will be socially distant, and at the end, you'll get a treat bag that will be packed specifically for your safety and health in mind. And more information about that, it's going to be 4:30 to 7:30 at the middle school parking lot, the Phoenixville Area Middle School parking lot, 4:30 to 7:30 on October 31st. For more information about that event, you can go to inmesttogetherpxv.com backslash Halloween. Again, for information about the drive-through display or any of the costume decorating or coloring contests, you can go to inmesttogetherpxv.com backslash Halloween. Thank you all very much. Thank you for your support, and thank you for all you do to keep our community safe, healthy, and keep Phoenixville open. So keep those masks up, and let's keep moving forward. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that, we'll move on to the appointments and public resolutions section of tonight's agenda. As a reminder, we have a variety of boards and commissions that we seek public participation on tonight. This month, we have openings available on the zoning hearing board, beautification advisory committee, the REC board, civil service, and human relations commission. So if you are interested in joining any of these boards or committees, please reach out to your council people or borough staff, and we'll get your application set up for, for next month's meetings. With that, we do have three actions tonight. We have two resignations and a, and an application, and I just want to see what council's pleasure is on these three items.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Mr. Joseph McFarland from the zoning hearing board. His term expires January 31st, 2024, and that was discussed and recommended in PPS Committee 3-0, came out of that committee.
I will second that with, with regrets.
Certainly. I know Mr. McFarland was very instrumental in zoning and hearing, so of course, we want to make sure we recognize that work. Anything else?
With that, we have a motion for Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Kirchner. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes seven zero. And what is council's pleasure on our next item?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Andrew Carpenter to the Beautification Advisory Commission, and that also can-
I think you jumped, missed one there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh. I'm screen, I'm toggling between my screen and the agenda. I apologize.
Just want to make sure the motion was right. Sorry.
It's okay. Um. I see next on the agenda, the appointment of Andrew Carpenter.
Should be resignation.
Oh, resignation, I'm sorry, of Andrew Carpenter from the Beautification Advisory Commission. And his term expired January 31st, 2026, and that came out of Committee 3-0.
A motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Moore. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes seven zero.
And then unfortunately, we did have those resignations, but we do have an appointment to consider, so I will make a motion to consider the appointment of Jane Duckdale for the Beautification Commission, and that would be a term to expire October 31st, 2024. So we're filling a position that was previously vacant at our last meeting, and that came out of Committee 3-0.
I'll second that.
A motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Kirchner. As Ms. Berkeley mentioned, there, there is, there will still be one outstanding opening on BAC after this vote either way. So with that, any questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, Ms. Duckdale, for, for joining our BAC. As I mentioned, there, there will still be one opening on BAC, and then also zoning hearing, REC board, civil service, and human relations. So if any members are interested in joining, please reach out to your council people or borough staff directly. Okay, with that, we'll move on to new business. Tonight, we have a request for ZHB, our zoning hearing board. Mr. Crack, are you able to provide some background on this item?
I will, and the solicitor will, will correct me if I, if I say this in the wrong way. The applicant has property at 173 Mallory Road, which it appears it is separate from Northridge Village. It's, it's, it's a property that is owned, that's not part of the homeowners association. And they have been trying to sell the property in order to develop it as a single-family home. Based on the information that was provided, the zoning officer rendered a decision that he didn't believe that they could use the rear yard setback requirement. And so the applicant has indicated that they may appeal that decision. However, before they go that far, they have chosen to submit an application to the zoning hearing board for variance to allow the development of the proposed single-family home based on the merits of the project itself. Typically, council does not send representation to the zoning hearing board on such things as a single-family home. And it's our recommendation to stay that course. However, we would typically seek council support to send representation to support the denial of the, of the zoning officer's decision. As I understand it, as it, as it stands right now, and if, if, if they get the variance, then it more or less renders the decision, the zoning officer's decision on the setbacks moot, because the ZHB allows the project to be developed. So as it stands right now, the applicant is going before the zoning hearing board, I believe, next week for the variance. Depending on how that turns out, obviously determines whether or not they go in November to the zoning hearing board to challenge the zoning officer's appeal, and I would defer to the solicitor as to whether I got that correct.
Yes, Gene, the manager explained that correctly. The, the basis of the application was twofold. One was appealing Dave's denial of a permit to build the house for three reasons, the rear yard setback, whether a deck was permitted, and whether there was shared parking with a neighboring lot. In addition to appealing Dave's denial, they've also asked in the alternative for variances. So as Gene indicated, typically, you wouldn't get involved or take a position in a variance case. I would always recommend that where your zoning officer makes a decision, you support your zoning officer before the zoning hearing board, because if the zoning hearing board makes a decision on an appeal like that, then that, that decision becomes binding for future cases. A variance does not. So there's a huge distinction legally between how you get the relief. So I think it's staff recommendation that you authorize the, at least our office to oppose the appeal from Dave's determination, but take no action on the variance. And Gene, if I stated that incorrectly, you'll correct me.
I think, I think we're good. Now it's up to council to decide what they would prefer to do.
But there's no variance in front of us now?
Yes, yes. The application seeks, one, an appeal from Dave's decision, and in the alternative, a variance. So the variances are in front of you. We're suggesting you let the zoning hearing board rule on the variance cases, and then we'll go back to the, the applicants agreed to bifurcate this, this appeal if, if you agree to take no position on the variance.
Mr. Kirk.
Mr. President, if I may, I, I will make a motion to send representation to the zoning hearing board to defend the zoning officer's decision with regard to 173 Mallory, Mallory Road, with the understanding that this has no, no bearing on the variances.
A motion by Mr. Kirchner, second by Mr. Dalton. Questions on the motion, since this is a complicated one? Any questions?
Just, just that Mr. Kirchner's motion was very well stated. Well, thank you.
Gold star. Any questions on the motion? Seeing no further questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, motion passes seven zero. Next up under new business tonight, we have a public hearing pertaining to our bond debt.
It's not actually a public hearing tonight, Mr. President's schedule, a public hearing.
Sure, Mr. Crack, if you want to give us background, then we'll lead into the motion.
Sure, as, as the solicitor indicated, we are, we are poised at this juncture for the November 10th to, to have a bond, an auction earlier in the day on November 10th, and then that night, the public hearing to consider the ordinance to approve that, that bond that comes out earlier that day. So as we normally do, we, we come to you the month before, we're looking to do something, to schedule, advertise the public hearing, which is what we typically do, but in this case, what we're required to do, and because there is so much information in there, I believe I saw Mr. Uncle Vic, there he is, online, so I would ask that he maybe hit to touch the highlights of what the, the draft ordinance is. We do recognize there's some names and some things that are, that are entered from a draft version that we had previously. Those will, those will be changed accordingly, but he can go over the, the highlights of what this, this ordinance is, because there's a lot of information in it.
Thank you, good evening, everyone, I'm Dave Unkovic with McNeese-Wallison Nurick, serving as your bond counsel on this bond issue. Just to go over the timing a little bit before I discuss the resolution. This is a process where we're heading up toward a big day on November tenth. So at this point, the ordinance is being introduced, it won't be considered until November ten. But between now and then, Ryan and Gary, your financial advisor, will be sending out an invitation to bid, requesting interested bondholders to bid on these bonds, and there'll be an electronic process run for, by them for bidding on the bonds. That invitation will go out a couple of weeks before November ten, and then the bidding will actually be done online on November ten during the day. And that process will generate the best bid for your bonds. Then during that day, I will take the information that Gary and Ryan generate from those bids and put that information into the ordinance. So there are blanks in the ordinance now on interest rates and exactly when the bonds mature each year and so forth, but all that stuff will be filled in before you vote on it on November ten, but we won't know it really until November ten. Once, if you enact the ordinance and accept it, then there's a process from then to closing, so the closing would be about December seventeenth. And during that period, we put together a package and file it with the Department of Community and Economic Development in Harrisburg, and they have the right to approve all local bond issues in Pennsylvania. So they have a twenty day approval process that they go through. If they approve the bond issue, then we go to closing, and at closing on December seventeen, the bond purchasers pony up their money, and the cost of issuance are paid, and the rest of the money goes to the borough and will be held by the borough as construction money. And then you have, I understand from Gene, approximately a two-year construction schedule for the two projects. So that's sort of the timeframe, are there any questions on that before I go through the ordinance? Okay. Let me go through the ordinance. Gene, does, do the council people have copies of the ordinance?
There is a copy in their package, yes, they have.
Okay, and I know it's a long document, it's twenty eight pages, and so let me try to go through it generally. The purpose of the ordinance is to comply with the Local Government Unit Debt Act. So when the borough or any other local government issues debt, there's a statute that talks about how the debt has to be structured. And you know, basically, how the bonds are treated, how they're issued, how they trade, and so forth. So the first two pages of the ordinance are a long capitalized title of the ordinance, but the whereas is give the background, it talks about the borough itself, it talks about the two projects. So as you know, the two projects are construction of a new borough-owned recreation center and the construction of a new borough-owned fire and emergency services station and improvements to Paradise Street for emergency services accessibility. Those are the two projects, there's also a catch-all third project, other capital projects as may be approved by the governing body. So if you get down the road after issuing these bonds and you have some savings that you don't, you don't need as much money to finish the projects as you had anticipated, the extra bond money that you have could be used for other capital projects that Borough Council may designate down the road. Okay, so that's, that's all defined in the whereas is. It also, the ordinance and the whereas is designates who the winning bidder is through the invitation to bid process. So we won't know that until November tenth, but that, there's a blank there, and that'll get filled in on November ten. And then there are numbered paragraphs in the ordinance. And section one approves the occurrence of the debt and the purpose of the bond issue and an estimated completion date, which we have as December thirty one, twenty twenty two, to complete the construction. Section two has realistic estimated useful life of about forty years for these projects. There's an authorization for the officers to sign and submit, in addition to the copy of this ordinance, a debt statement and a borrowing base to DCED, and that shows that the amount of debt that you're issuing for this bond issue is within the debt limits under the debt act. Section four is a biggie, this is the security for the bonds, so it's, you are covenanting when you issue the bonds to budget appropriate and pay the amounts each year necessary to pay the bonds off. And you're pledging your full faith credit and taxing power, including your real estate taxing power, behind that agreement to make the payments on the bonds. And that's what the bondholders, the purchasers are relying on. There are other sections, section five and section six, they get into a lot of details about how the bonds are actually issued and traded and so forth. The, you're appointing TD Bank as your paying agent. So the underwriter at closing is going to make their payment into the paying agent, who will then pay the cost of issuance and pay the money over for construction to the borough. So you're identifying TD Bank as the paying agent function under the ordinance. There's also an entity called Depository Trust Company in New York, and that's where the bonds are actually registered. So when we issue the bonds at closing, as with ninety-nine percent of the bond issues now in the country, the registered owner at closing is Depository Trust Company, it's not the individual bondholders. And then Depository Trust Company is a big computer system up in New York, and it actually runs the registration for the bondholder. So the entities that own the bonds will be listed with Depository Trust Company, so it approves that process. Section six approves the appointment of the paying agent of TD Bank to serve as paying agent. And they technically pay the principal and interest on the bonds, they actually pay DTC, who then pays all the people who are registered with them. So there's a long section on that. Section seven is on transferring and exchanging bonds, so once you own a bond, if you own a hundred thousand dollars of bonds, you can sell fifty thousand and keep fifty thousand, so it goes through the process of how all that's done in your ordinance, and this is required by the debt act, that's why it's so long and has all this stuff in it. Section eight authorizes your officers to sign and deliver the bonds and any other documents necessary for the closing on the bond issue. And the form of the bonds in section nine is referred to, so exhibit A to this ordinance is actually the bond form for, that the bondholders are going to get when they purchase your bonds. And then section eleven talks about how these bonds are going to be sold. So it mentions this invitation to sale process that your financial advisors are going to run for you. And it says that that's, that that process is in the best financial interest of the borough to use that process. And the invitation to bid that Gary and Ryan are going to send out is actually attached to the ordinance as exhibit C. And then section eleven, the second paragraph actually describes the award, so whoever the winning bidder is, this will say the price that they're buying the bonds at and the interest rates on the bonds and so forth, so that information will get filled in in the ordinance. Okay, and then section thirteen authorizes the filing, as I described before, with DCED once the ordinance is enacted and have their approval. Section fourteen has some tax covenants. This, these are covenants that you're making, that you're going to keep the interest on the bonds tax exempt, which basically means you're going to use these public facilities as true public facilities. And then section fifteen, in connection with the marketing of the bonds, there's a preliminary official statement that's prepared that your borough officials and your financial advisor are working on, that describes the borough and it describes the bonds, and that's the marketing piece that's used in connection with the invitation to bid. So the underwriters get the invitation to bid, they also get this preliminary official statement, and based on that, they go out and line up people who are interested in purchasing the bonds. So this section approves the disclosure that's being made to the bond purchasers. Section sixteen, there's a settlement account at closing where the underwriters' money goes into with the paying agent, and then that's used to pay cost of issuance and to provide the construction money to the borough. And there's some sections that talk about how that is invested. There's the possibility of bond insurance. I'll let Gary and Ryan talk about whether that's in the cards here or not, but you may decide that it's economically better for getting lower interest rates to also buy municipal bond insurance to back up the bonds, so that the security would be not just your taxing power, but also the insurance company. Section nineteen authorizes you to pay the issuance costs to issue the bonds. Section twenty appoints my firm as bond counsel. And then there's some minor sections that repeal inconsistent ordinances and so forth. So that's the text of the ordinance, and then, as I said before, the exhibit A attached to it is the bond form itself. It repeats a lot of the detailed stuff that's in the ordinance. And then there's an exhibit B, and this will get filled in on November ten after the pricing that has the actual maturity schedule for the bonds and any redemption provisions. So the redemption, the optional redemption is the ability of you down the road to call the bonds in at a hundred cents on a dollar, on or after a certain date. And I'll let Gary and Ryan talk about what that might be. So exhibit C is the invitation to bid, which I talked about before, and then exhibit D actually lists the annual appropriation amounts you're going to have to put into the sinking fund to pay the debt service on the bonds, and we'll know that once the bonds price. So once again, if you enact this ordinance, you're approving the bid that came in as a result of the invitation to bids and approving the issuance of the bonds, and from that point, we go on to closing. So I'll stop there. Mr. President, if there are any questions?
Any questions?
Sorry, that was longer.
It was a good summary, any questions from council for the first part of this resolution? Okay.
I think Mr. Moore.
So as I understood it, we're I thought we were voting on announcing a public hearing on this ordinance. We're not voting today.
Tonight, you're approving the scheduling and advertising of the public hearing that would ultimately culminate in the approval of the ordinance itself.
On November tenth.
On November tenth.
So the public hearing will be held on the evening of the day that the bonds go on sale?
Correct.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, similar to all our ordinances, Mr. Moore, we have the public hearing, the ordinance is then ready for your enactment.
Yeah, the big thing that night will be Gary and Ryan reviewing with you the bids and who they think the winning bidder is and what that means to you financially. That'll be the guts of it, and then you'll consider the ordinance. Gary and Ryan, I don't know if you want to add anything on that?
Simply, Dave, that they mentioned insurance, generally with the borough's rating, you don't see insurance, but the beauty of doing a competitive bid is that the insurance is taken into the pricing of the bonds in computing the true interest cost, and the bids are awarded on the lowest true interest cost. So should you have insurance or should you not have insurance, you know it's a mathematical calculation, and it was definitely needed, not just someone telling you it was an extra expense. So that takes care of that on a competitive bid, the bids are scheduled for eleven o'clock to eleven fifteen on November tenth. There's a two-minute extension allowed, so if a lower bid comes in within the last two minutes of the bid, then the window stays open an additional two minutes. And that could continue as long as people bid, continue bidding. So the beauty of the competitive bid, as you know, that day, your credit, your amortization schedule, you have the lowest possible price for your bonds.
So just to be clear, this is essentially a reverse auction where the numbers are supposed to go down.
Right.
Yes.
Any questions from council on either of these items pertaining to the advertising of this public hearing?
Now, Gary, are we are able to send council persons the link to watch that auction, correct?
Yeah, Ryan and I will be in touch with the auction platform. They've changed the format a little bit since the last time we did the auction in two thousand and twelve. Now, anybody that wants to go on has to give us a notice ahead of time, so we can give them their own individual login.
It's fun to watch, though, you should do it if you're interested.
Usually what happens for about the first seven to ten minutes, nothing happens, and then all of a sudden, everything breaks loose.
So tonight's motion would be to schedule and advertise the public hearing to consider the ordinance on November tenth.
Correct.
Any questions from council for our two consultants here? Okay, seeing that, what is counsel's pleasure for this motion?
I make a motion to schedule a public hearing on the ordinance to authorize the direction that the incurring of the non-electoral debt for the issuance of general obligation bonds.
A motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Weiss. With that, questions on the motion? Mr. Kurtner?
Yes, Mr. President, if I may, first off, I want to, I want to thank the councils for their thorough explanation of the bonding process, that's, I've been through it before, and there's a lot I've forgotten, so I really appreciate that. While I oppose the full amount of this bond issue, I intend to vote to have the public hearing, because I do think that the the borough, the public has, has to be heard on this issue. I just, I just want to explain my vote on that, in case anybody questions that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Absolutely, absolutely. Any other questions on the motion?
In the motion, do we have to specify the date of the hearing? Do we need to amend that?
Mr. Crack, do you need specific dates for the hearing more?
Because of the significance of this, normally we don't, but in this case, I would say that we would be better off if you were to amend and include the public hearing for November tenth.
But so, I saw amend my motion to include that the hearing would be held on November tenth, whatever day of the week that is, twenty twenty.
And Mr. Weiss?
Second, I'm going to amend it. Compurs, okay, so thank you for adjusting that motion. Any other questions or comments on the motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you to our consultants for being here, that is a lot of information to understand, and we'll see you in a few weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, one comment, we did have a meet, we did have a phone call with the rating agency today, and your staff did a heck of a job, they knocked it out of the park. So we're waiting for the rating, and we don't anticipate anything bad, we expect everything good, so.
I'm eager to hear the rating when it comes in, and I appreciate the words of confidence in our staff on that.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to item C under new business. We have our, every few years, we do have our Comcast cable franchise agreement come up for renegotiation. What is counsel's pleasure pertaining to scheduling and advertising this public hearing?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion that council schedule and advertise a public hearing for November tenth, twenty twenty, to consider an ordinance authorizing the new cable franchise agreement with Comcast.
A motion by Mr. Kurtner, second by Ms. Berkeley, questions on this motion? Seeing no questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes seven zero. And lastly, under new business tonight, we have an item from our borough, we have a recommendation for our security camera upgrade. Mr. Crack, do you want to give us a brief rundown on this, since this project is a few years old now, and I'm not sure if everybody's up to date on it?
All right. All right, um, and I I. In my file. I'm not seeing the the recommendation, uh, so I if I can explain it, hopefully you'll understand it. We had three bids. Uh, that came in and. One of the bidders, uh, Securitas Electronic Security, Inc., withdrew their bid, so that left two. Uh, remaining bids, one of which is the way I phrased it in. Item D here, which is, uh, MJF Electrical Contracting. As the lowest responsible and responsive bidder. At one eighteen, three twenty for the base bid. And the alternate bid at sixty five hundred. And alternate bid number two at twenty four thousand one hundred for a total. Excuse me, of one forty eight, nine twenty. Uh, I do have the the bid from Cedar Electric. And their base bid was one thirty three, eight fifty. Their, uh, alternate one was sixty five hundred as well. Uh, their, uh, alternate two was fourteen, six, two, five for a total of one fifty four, nine. Nine seventy five, so, uh, it. The MJF is still considered the 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 lowest, uh, responsible and responsive bidder for, uh, this project. Uh, we do have the funds, uh, to to move this forward. Uh, so we would look to, uh, counsel for, uh, a recommendation. Uh, to to go ahead and assign to the. The water treatment plant's security camera bid to MJF Electrical Contracting, Inc. In the total amount of one forty eight, one hundred and forty eight thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars.
And what is counsel's pleasure pertaining to this bid award?
Mr. President. I'm I'll make a motion that we, um. Grant the bid to, um. Um. Well, wait, what was the company? Was it MJF?
MJF, yes, sir.
Okay, to MJF Electrical Contracting, um, in the amount of a hundred forty eight thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. For the security camera. Security cameras at the water treatment plant.
Second.
Most by Miss Kirchner, second by Mr. Moore. Uh, questions on the motion. Uh, Gene, I know we had applied for grant money. Was there grants, uh, received for this project?
Yes, I think Miss Getfree could, uh, respond to to that.
That'd be great.
We have a hun- we have a hundred and fifty four thousand for the project itself through DCDPA Small Water Grant. Uh, it does have a contract and. Grant contract and date, uh, so this will be, this will be within that timeframe. So we have enough to cover that. And then because it became lower than the bid, what we would do is it's an eighty five fifteen grant, eighty five percent is is grant funding, fifteen percent is the borough match. So once the total project is done, we'll, um. We'll, we'll make the calculation to see that we might not actually use all of the grant money. And all of the money we have set aside for the for the boroughs, uh, match as well.
So to to be clear, that's, uh, that covers the, uh, the, uh, the engineering, uh, that started the project as well as the, uh, inspections that ends the project.
Very good. That's that's a, a, a very important project to. Uh, I know we've been working on getting this project off the ground for a while, so. Uh, with that, any questions from counsel on the motion? Okay, all those in favor?
I.
I. Pose. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, we'll, uh, we now move into public resolutions. Uh, as mentioned earlier tonight. We do have the resignation of Joseph McFarland from our, uh, as chair and member from the zoning hearing board. What is counsel's pleasure pertaining to this resolution?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion, um, to, or to accept the resolution acknowledging Joseph McFarland as a member and chair of the zoning hearing board.
I'll second that.
Motion by Miss Berkeley, second by Mr. Kirchner, questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
Oppose.
I.
Motion passes seven zero. With that, I I will, uh, read into the record the resolution that we have prepared for Mr. McFarland. Uh, who who served an incredibly long tenure on the. Um, on the zoning hearing board, uh, with that. A resolution of gratitude for the public service of Joe McFarland as a member and chairman of the zoning hearing board for the Borough of Feensville, Chester County, Pennsylvania. Whereas Joe McFarland served diligently and honorably as a member from two thousand and four and chairman since June ninth, twenty seventeen of the Feensville Zoning Hearing Board. Through September ninth, twenty twenty. Whereas Joe McFarland provided invaluable and dedicated service to the Feensville Zoning Hearing Board during that time. And whereas Feensville Council wishes to express its most sincere gratitude. And appreciation to Joe McFarland for all of his efforts and commitments to the borough in performing his dedicated responsibilities over the past sixteen years. Now therefore be it resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Feensville that Joe McFarland is recognized and publicly acknowledged for his tremendous commitment and effort in performing his duties. And further does with offer their best wishes for his future endeavors. It's quite a long tenure on on the zoning hearing board, and we do appreciate, uh, the work that he has put in. With that, we have several other resolutions tonight. Um. Our next one. For Susan DiCirchio, what is counsel's pleasure?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion, um, to accept the resolution acknowledging Susan DiCirchio. DiCirchio, um, as a member of the Tree Advisory Commission.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
With a motion by Miss Berkeley, second by Mr. Kirchner, questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
I.
Oppose. Motion passes seven zero, and with that, I will read into the record, uh. Susan's, uh, resolution. A resolution of gratitude for the public service of Susan DiCirchio as a member of the Tree Advisory Commission for the Borough of Feensville, Chester County, Pennsylvania. Whereas Susan DiCirchio served diligently and honorably with the Feensville Tree Advisor Commission since April tenth, twenty eighteen. And whereas Mr. DiCirchio provided invaluable service to the Feensville Tree Advisor Commission during that time. And whereas Borough Council wishes to express its thanks and appreciation to Susan DiCirchio for all of her efforts and commitment in performing her duties. Now therefore be it resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Feensville that Susan DiCirchio is recognized. And publicly acknowledged for her commitment and efforts in performing her duties and further does offer their best wishes in her future endeavors. Thanks, Susan, for, uh, stepping up and taking part on our TAC for a number of years. And with that, we have two more resolutions tonight. The next one, um, is a a detailed, uh. Uh, standard construction detail plan. Um, I believe this is updating our current standards, but since this is one that, um, is a little more nuanced, I wanted to, uh, get a little background from Mr. Crack. Just a a brief.
Very briefly, uh, one of the, uh, the beauties of the way we do this, uh, this detail. Is it allows us to stay to stay consistent, and I think Miss Berkeley realized that, uh, at the. The meeting she participated on a a week or so ago. Where the county was, uh, looking at municipalities to continually improve, uh. The the documents that help, uh, govern the the municipalities. Uh, and this is one of those those details where we we try to stay on top of the new design standards to come out that were constantly. Uh, staying, uh, ahead of the game when it comes to things such as sidewalks, uh, aprons on on driveways and and other such things. So. That's it. That's exactly what this is doing. It's just bringing in, uh, the most current, uh, details and allows. Uh, anybody that's using chapter twenty-two to use these details as they develop their, uh, site development plans. So this one, uh, moving past tonight. These would become the new details that would be used for any project, uh, coming in, uh, after tonight.
And what is counsel's pleasure pertaining to this resolution?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to consider the resolution amending the borough's standard construction details to chapter twenty-two subdivision. Um, and land development.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
We have a motion by Miss Berkeley, second by Mr. Kirchner, questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
I.
Opposed. Motion passes seven zero. And finally, we have a, uh, slightly. Out of the ordinary, uh, resolution for a sanitary sewer line. Uh, Gene, if you're able to give a a quick background on this, I. It it, uh, took a while to get to us, but, um. I think you can, uh, give us a synopsis.
Um, sure, uh, this one, um, it this one goes way back in 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 time. Uh, quite frankly, back to two thousand and ten. Where the borough was, uh, improving its sewer infrastructure. Uh, mainly the, uh, sanitary interceptor. That, uh, came off of Paradise Street and then follows, uh, the property line. Uh, back towards Hall Street. Uh, and basically involved, uh, primarily, uh, two, uh, two property owners, the Marables. Uh, and then Oler, uh, they, if somebody may recall, Oler had a a tank that sat back behind, uh, the take lumber area. It over the course of, uh, time, uh, you know, obviously we did this. And, uh, a question came up. About a year ago. And so the natural thing is we go into the files to get a copy of the, uh. Uh, the Eastman Agreement. Uh, we had a copy of the filed and recorded Eastman Agreement for Oler. And we had all of the copies of the unsigned documents for Marably. But nothing signed, and in a search of the records, nothing, nothing there. Uh, which was, you know, actually quite frustrating because, you know, we got a sewer line in there. We weren't necessarily worried about that because the the previous sewer line, uh, got put into place back in the thirties, and. If you, uh, uh. Go back into nineteen thirty-eight, there's a huge ordinance that basically, uh, provided for the borough to put in, uh, its sanitary system. So. We weren't worried about it from that perspective, but it's, it's just, we were questioning ourselves, what happened? Uh, as it, as it. Happened about, I don't know, uh, a month or so ago. Mister, uh, uh, Ewald asked me to look up something, uh, completely different, uh, and. Going to the files. And there's a, there's a packet there with three original signatures with the three little, the little tab that says sign here on it. Uh, and it's original signatures, uh, for, uh, Mister Marably Tom, and then his brother. Uh, who lived in New Jersey and the notaries from the borough, uh, notary and the New Jersey notary, and there, there they were, all three signed originals. But the question became, why were they in a file? Uh, and probably Rich is may, maybe the only person would, uh, recognize this. Uh, back and well, that maybe Dana too, back in February of twenty ten, at that timeframe. We were coming off of the heels of two things. One was an election. And the other was a, uh, a change in the structure of our organization due to the two thousand and eight financial debacle. So. The two thousand and nine timeframe led us into the twenty ten budget process. So Brenda, my administrative assistant at that time, was, uh, let go. And Henry resigned as president of council. And so like, all I can surmise is that that folder was. There, ready to do something, she leaves, he leaves, and it sits in a in a folder for ten years. So now, uh, there's, to our understanding, I've talked with, uh, the solicitor about this. Uh, there doesn't seem to be any time issues. Uh, Borough Council, when offered a dedication, can do that. Now that we know that we have signatures, this will allow, uh, Mister, uh, Ewald to sign in place of Henry. Uh, and we have a resolution to to back it up. Mr. Solicitor, did it explain that one correctly?
You did so excellently, Crack.
So, uh. I guess it's probably appropriate that we pull something out of the the skeleton closet, uh, around Halloween. Here we have.
With that background, uh, what is counsel's pleasure regarding this resolution?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we accept the, uh, dedication of the sanitary sewer line. And related improvements as part of the Paradise Street Interceptor Sewer Replacement Project.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Kirchner, second by Miss Berkeley. Questions on the motion? I'm impressed that it made the move over to the new building and everything. It's, uh. And to still have the original signatures, it's impressive. But it's.
That's organization.
Yeah. With that, uh, seeing no other questions, all those in favor?
I.
I.
Oppose. Motion passes seven zero. That concludes our resolutions for tonight. Uh, we will now move into our public hearing phase. Uh, with that, we need a motion to, uh, open a public hearing.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to open a public hearing, uh, to consider. Uh, an ordinance. Impacting, amending chapter fifteen, the motor vehicle and traffic, part two, traffic regulations, six to. Two, seven.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Kirchner. Questions on the motion? All those in favor?
I.
I.
Pose. Motion passes seven zero. I will hand it off to our solicitor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. This is a, uh, public hearing to take public comment. With respect to proposed changes to the borough's master traffic ordinance. Uh, specifically, chapter fifteen of the codified ordinances. Um, procedurally, this hearing, uh, noticed as well as the intent to adopt the. Ordinance changes were advertised in the Mercury on September twenty eighth. Uh, in addition, because the complete copy of the ordinance was not advertised. Uh, the ordinance was provided to the Chester County Law Library, which is required by the Borough Code. And that occurred on September twenty second. Uh, with respect to the ordinance itself, uh, there are four substantive, uh. Changes or sections, uh, to amend the traffic ordinance. The first change occurs in section fifteen, two oh seven, regarding one-way, uh, streets that are established. Uh, I believe the first section clarifies, uh, certain portions of Oak Street. Uh, as determined to be one-way streets. Section two of the ordinance would amend section fifteen dash two thirteen, stop intersections established. Again, this deals with establishing certain stop stop signs on Oak Street and Paradise Street. Section three of the ordinance would amend section fifteen, four oh two. Uh, parking prohibited at all times in certain locations. Uh, this would regulate portions of the west side of Gay Street and specifically describe, uh, where those parking provisions would occur. And finally, section four of the ordinance would amend section fifteen, four oh five. Uh, parking time limited in certain locations, certain days and hours. Again, that's also one Gay Street on the west side. Provides for the limited times where the parking would be, uh, prohibited or limited. Those are the four, uh, sections of the ordinance. Um, it has been advertised, so you can adopt it this evening. Uh, I would turn it over to you, Mr. President, to acknowledge any folks that wish to provide any comments to Borough Council. On the proposed changes to the master traffic ordinance.
If you chuck. Uh, chucking in with borough staff, do we have any, uh, comments coming in from the live stream comment system?
Just waiting to see if anything comes through.
Mr. President, I don't see anything at this time.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Mostly housekeeping items and some. Simple adjustments, so I'm not expecting a ton of comment. Okay, any questions from council on this public hearing? Okay, Mr. Kirchner.
Thank you. I was just trying to find my unmute button here. With, with regard to the direction of traffic on Heckle Street, this. If I may direct this to the manager, right, this doesn't change anything, it just codifies. What's there now, correct?
Correct. The, the language is, is, everybody here, I presume everybody here recognizes it. That Oak Street does not go from Heckle all the way to Callow Hill, clear across.
That's a long way.
That's a long way. But I would argue it would be our longest street. So really what it's doing, it's, it's fixing the language and then, and codifying it correctly, the way it should be.
Right.
It was the, the chief that, that recognized what the, the issue was and got it to me to fix. So that's what you have here.
And it adds the stop sign.
Correct.
Oak and Heckle, right?
That's correct.
And when would, when would the, when would these signs go up? I know they're pretty quick.
Approve these tonight, I, I take and cop, make a copy for our Streets Department. And within a matter of days, the changes will be made.
They might have them up tonight, knowing those guys, but.
They do move fast sometimes.
Any other questions from council? With that, if I remember correctly, the next step is to close out the public hearing. Is that correct, Chuck?
That would be correct, Mr. President.
Second.
Mr. President, I'm, I'm moved when you close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Mister Kirchner, second by Ms. Berkeley to close the public hearing pertaining to Chapter fifteen. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? And this public hearing is now closed. With that, we have a second ordinance amendment to consider tonight.
Mr. President. You, you're going to vote on the, the ordinance now, correct?
I was gonna do both, well, we can either do that or.
It's up to you, whichever you prefer, but both, both ordinances are ready, so.
Okay, okay, let's knock this one out. What is council's pleasure pertaining to a vote or a motion on Chapter fifteen?
I will make a motion to accept the ordinance amendment to Chapter fifteen, motor vehicles and traffic.
I'll second that.
We was motion by Ms. Berkeley, I saw Mister Weiss's hand first for the second. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero for the adoption of the ordinance amendment. Thank you very much. Okay, now with that, we'll need a motion to go into another public hearing pertaining to Chapter twenty-three.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to open a public hearing to review the ordinance amendment to Chapter twenty-three. Stormwater management.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mister Moore to open a public hearing for the consideration of Chapter twenty-three. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes seven zero, and I will hand it back to Chuck for explanation on this ordinance amendment.
Okay, thank you again, Mr. President. The second public hearing this evening is for the purpose of taking. Public comment with respect to changes to Chapter twenty-three, stormwater management of the Borough Code of ordinances. Specifically, we are looking at amending Part eight, Section twenty-three, eight oh three, roof drains and sump pumps. Procedurally, notice of this hearing, as well as the intent to adopt the ordinance, was advertised in the Mercury on September twenty-eighth. In addition, a notice of the entire ordinance was also provided to the Chester County Law Library on September twenty-second. In the case of this ordinance, it appears there is just one substantive section regarding changes to the stormwater ordinance of the borough. Specifically, Section twenty-three, eight oh three separates roof drain discharges. As well as sump pump foundation and footing drain discharges. It updates and explains the regulations for how they are to be handled and addressed. And under what circumstances and where those discharges should go. At this point, Mr. President, would open the public hearing for any public comment. With respect to residents on the changes, certainly the borough is always cognizant of updating its stormwater management ordinance. To, to do the best it can based upon the newest standards. And I think we're updating these for purposes of completeness.
Thank you very much. With that, I will check in with borough staff here to see if. We are receiving any public comments through the live stream chat feature on our website. While we wait for any public comments come in during this public hearing, any members from council have any questions? On this amendment? And from the borough staff end, is there any, any comments coming in?
Nothing at this time, Mr. President.
Okay. We'll give this just another few moments here. Okay, seeing no other further comment or seeing no comment from the public on this public hearing. What is council's pleasure? Pertaining to closing the public hearing.
We will close the hearing.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mister Moore to close the public hearing. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. What is council's pleasure pertaining to taking action on the proposed ordinance amendment?
Mr. President, I make a motion to. Stop the ordinance, amending Chapter twenty-three, stormwater management, Part eight, prohibition, roof drains and sump pumps.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Mister Moore, second by Mister Kirchner. Questions on the motion?
I, I just kind of do want to understand, these are being updated to the latest, I think, Gene said, standards. Where, where do these changes or recommended changes come from? Do they come from the state or industry practice or?
Well, they, they, they're typically called, what we call BMPs, best management practices. That evolve out of DEP as it relates to stormwater management. And a little bit of lessons we learned, as, as most of you know. We had a couple of years of some serious rain and then some developments that resulted in a lot of issues. With certain, certain developments and then certain locations. So taking that information, looking at best management practices, this is the result of, of that. And so it helps us push the development community and even up to and including single-family homes. That get developed to follow the most up-to-date practices being deployed by DEP.
With these new standards. Is it, developments that are already in place or have submitted plans or something, do they have to comply? Or are they grandfathered in? What, does this only affect those who like are starting at square one from tonight onward?
No, and Chuck can verify this. The protections, as an example, preliminary plan. The protections of that are primarily for zoning. Standards that would be applied in a final submission of a set of plans. Would follow the most recent adopted ordinances that the borough has. Correct, Chuck?
That, that's correct. And, and Mister Moore, these, these changes, we're looking specifically at roof drain discharges, sump pump discharges. So they, as stormwater regulations, they would apply across the board. So we're looking at everything. We're looking at developments, we're looking at houses, we're looking at, at all projects to make sure that they comply with these. So we don't have the stormwater issues that the manager described.
Thank you. Those are all I had.
Okay, with that, any other questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved, seven zero. That takes us through the public hearing section of tonight's agenda. With that, we'll move into reports from committees, boards and committee, commissions. Mister Moore with planning commission.
Yeah, thank you. I'll just update people. We had, the last meeting we had was Thursday, September tenth. The October meeting, which would have normally have been held last week, was canceled because there was no business in front of us. Four major pieces of business were dealt with, two had to do with review of the fire station and the. Phoenixville Civic Recreation Center. The, both plans were, I believe, preliminary finals and both received approval. Well, the, the Phoenixville Civic Rec Center, the Recreation Center, there was a minor update to, to the proposal, which had previously been approved. And the updates were approved as well. The Phoenixville Fire Department, we took a look at the preliminary plan on that. In the fair detail and a fairly extensive discussion about that. Then there were two sketch plans that were submitted. One is for the construction of two new buildings. To each contain nine residential units on Morgan and Gay Street, which is where the old. I guess it's the grade school is now an apartment building. Adding building, adding additional residences along the Morgan Street, the short Morgan Street side. So that was the sketch plan, that's into further discussion. So that was discussed, that preliminary sketch plan. And then on the north side, corner of. Corner of High Street and I can't recall, Richie would know, the street that goes past Holy Trinity, one thirteen, the corner there. Yeah. Dayton, okay. Really nice little proposal to put up a, combining five parcels into one and put up a building with. Both retail on the ground floor and. Four apartments on the upper four, which previously had been some pretty derelict buildings. So that was also a sketch plan, but they're proceeding, so some nice developments there. So, as I said, no. No further actions were made with regard to any of the other plans. And there was nobody was ready to come before the planning commission for October. So don't know what the status is for November. Mister Crack, anything else I missed on that?
At this point, we would be seeking a, a motion for items one and two on the, the agenda.
You're seeking a motion from me?
Normally, the motions come from the liaison, which would be you, yes, sir.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't see that in the, I saw the report. Guess I didn't.
Yeah, the, the two items we have for consideration are the rec center, the fire station for approved plans.
Okay. What page is that in the packet?
That would be page two. It's item.
I see, all right. So. Okay, thank you. Okay, make a motion to consider a resolution approving the Phoenixville Recreation Center preliminary final subdivision plan. As recommended six oh by the planning commission in their action memo of September eleventh, twenty twenty.
We have a motion by Mister Moore, I think there's a, a second by Mister Weiss?
Yes, a rapid second.
Rapid second, that's, need to double check that. Okay, questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppo, opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Mister Moore, back to you.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, scrolled down too far. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to consider a resolution approving the Phoenixville Fire Station preliminary final subdivision plan as recommended six oh. By the planning commission in their action memo of September eleventh, twenty twenty.
Second that.
Motion by Mister Moore, second by Mister Kirchner. Questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Anything else out of planning commission tonight, Mister Moore?
No.
Thank you very much. Moving on, we have the historical architectural review board, Mister Weiss.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. From the HARB, we have two items this week. The first is to consider the approval of this bit of appropriateness for a new sign on. As recommended, seven oh in HARB. So I'll make a motion. To consider the approval of this certificate of appropriateness for the new sign, request for four gate street as recommended, seven zero. In the HARB action memo dated October sixth.
Second.
The motion by Mister Weiss, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Mister Weiss?
So the second item coming out of HARB, I'd like to make a motion to consider the approval of this bit of appropriateness for the new sign request. For one seventy-seven Bridge Street as recommended, seven zero, in the HARB action memo dated October sixth.
Second.
Motion by Mister Weiss, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on this sign application motion? I'm happy to see more businesses are opening up, that's a good sign. Any, any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, Mister Weiss. Anything else out of HARB?
Uh, no, not at this time.
Very good. Mister Kirchner with regional planning?
Thank you, Mr. President. Not, not much going on. We're still proceeding with our work on revising the. The regional comprehensive plan to incorporate West Pike Lynn Township. And the regional planning committee also approved a, a letter. To the Chester County Planning Commission, supporting a vision partnerships grant application by. Four of the six members of the regional planning committee. To pursue a grant with the, a vision partnerships grant with the Phoenixville. Area Clean Energy Alliance, the, the two. Members of the regional planning committee that are not. members of the regional planning committee that are not part of that grant application are are Phoenixville and Charlestown at this point, but but the regional planning group still sent a letter supporting that application. The East Pike Land will be administering that grant. Phoenixville typically, the borough finance staff typically administers expenses and related items for the regional planning committee, but because Phoenixville is not participating in this grant, East Pike Land is the administrator of of that for the Phoenixville Area Clean Energy Alliance. So that's that's a lot to say about not much going on, but thank you, Mr. President.
Just to clarify, should that be awarded, they would they would be doing the financials?
Yes, correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kirchner. Moving on to rec board, Ms. Dugan.
All right, um. The we've got a couple programs going on still. So the yoga in the park is still going on on Thursdays from six to seven at Reservoir Park near the near the pavilion, and those classes are $10. We're doing the Tai Chi Art of Mindfulness, a celebration of flow. Saturday, 10 a.m. to 11 a.m., 11 a.m. outside of Reservoir Park Pavilion. And we've got a couple things that we're doing for Halloween, trying to make it something that we can do, given the situation. You can get most of the information at the website, but you know, we're doing things like a virtual costume contest. And the deadline for that is October 23 with the categories being the kindergarten and younger, elementary school, middle school, high school, families, and even pets this year. Um, and there's going to be a virtual yard porch window decorating contest, same deadline, October 23. So make sure you check out the website and see if you can participate in some of those things, you know, maybe get the family involved. Try to maybe pretend like it's still normal. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Dugan. Mr. Soto wasn't able to join us tonight. I don't believe there's anything to report out from BAC. Okay, very good. With that, we will move into council action referred from a council committees. Ms. Berkeley with police personnel.
Yes, so no action to report. All the action we took care of with our appointments and resignations. And our next meeting will be on Monday, November 2 on the digital platform or the virtual platform.
Thank you. Was there anything out of our parks and rec meeting?
No, sir.
Skip over that one. Mr. Dalton with policy.
Or action report?
Okay. Mr. Weiss with ITT.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. No action report this time, although many of you may have noticed the the final pieces went in on the Montclair Bridge, the final sign. I'm capping off what I think has been a spectacular successful project. So here's to everybody that was involved in that. Our next meeting, if if I'm not correct, or if I'm not mistaken, is one week from tonight at 7 p.m. That'll be taking place. All for me.
Thank you. And Ms. Dugan, back to you for the finance committee.
All right, I'm gonna bundle these three. They are typical things that we normally handle. I'll make a motion to approve the 2020 prepaid dated 815, 2020 to 911, 2020, and the amount of 691,000 $286 to approve the 2020 prepaid ACH dated 831, 2020, and the amount of 20,398 dollars and 38 cents. And to approve the 2020 prepaid credit card statement dated 815, 2020 to 911, 2020, in the amount of 75,277 dollars and 50 cents.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Dugan for bundling items one through three with a second by Mr. Kirchner. Any questions on this motion tonight? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes seven zero. Anything else from finance tonight?
That's all tonight.
All right. That wraps up our council action from committees and our our reports from boards and commissions. It does take us into the second round of public participation. If you're joining us through the live stream system on our website, there is a chat box you can enable by entering your name and address and submitting public comments. While we wait for borough staff to see if there's any public comments coming through tonight, I do believe at this point we are planning on maintaining the Zoom platform for the remainder of the the foreseeable future. Is that correct, Mr. Crack?
That is correct. We've advertised for all meetings through November and December through the end of the year. Hopefully, we get better as a nation and come out of this thing next year with live meetings. That would be really nice.
It would be. For certain. And with that, is there any public comment tonight?
No, Mr. President, not at this time.
Okay. We'll give it just another more, another moment longer. Just in case, but. Okay, with that, we'll move into staff reports. Mr. Crack.
Sure, it's we're at that point, and it's it's a good place to be that we've we've gotten very good at at our budgeting process such that as some of you may recall, we would, we would come into October and the way to schedule normally works with advertising versus our November and December meetings, given what we meet, we sometimes would have to have a an in between meeting in in the October timeframe merely to be able to schedule and advertise. And we realized that we could do this a lot easier if we're all in position after the the October 27 finance committee meeting and enterprise fund and general fund are in relatively final draft form, we would be authorized, this would authorize us to go ahead and advertise at the timeframe to meet the the December normal meeting, but also not have to come back before the November 10 meeting. We did this last couple of years. It's worked out very well, and it's just a lot simpler than bringing everybody back for yet another meeting. Although I guess it is a little simpler with with Zoom, but still, there's no reason to come back to that if, in fact, the the draft budget is is arguably ready to go after the October 27 meeting. So the motion would be to authorize staff to advertise to draft general fund and enter find enterprise fund budgets after the October finance committee meeting consistent with Borough Code.
No moves.
I'll second.
Very good. We have a motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Kirchner. Questions on this motion? As Mr. Crack mentioned, this is how we've been doing the last couple of years and avoids unnecessary meeting. Any questions or comments on this process or this motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes seven zero. Anything else, Mr. Crack?
No, sir.
Police, fire, planning, public works, finance and human relations, staff reports are all in the packet available for for council. Seeing no questions or comments on those items. I do not believe we have a need for executive session tonight.
No, sir.
With that, there is no old business. So what is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Kirchner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much, everybody, for tuning in tonight.
Thanks, everyone.